I call this meeting to order. The time is 5:30. This is a regular meeting of the Weslaco City Commission. As required by law, the Office of the City Secretary properly posted a notice of the meeting. The day is Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, and the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the agenda as prepared and presented. If during the course of this meeting, the discussion of any item on the agenda should be held in executive or closed session, the City Commission will convey, convene in such executive session in accordance with Section 551.001 of the Texas Government Code. At this time, there are seven executive session items. It is the tradition of this commission to include in this meeting a prayer and pledge of allegiance to our American flag. Tonight, we are pleased to have Pastor Manuel Portillo from the Way of the Redeemed to lead us in our prayer time, and as he comes forward, I ask the audience to please stand.
Father, your word says in Matthew 7:7, "Ask, and it shall be given unto you; seek, you will find; knock, and the door shall be opened." And Father God, this evening, this afternoon, Father, we knock on your door asking for wisdom, Lord, that only you can provide for all of us, and we thank you, Father. In advance, we seek, Father God, your will, that your will be done, Lord, in our lives in the city of Weslaco as it is in heaven. And Father, at the end of this, Lord, may you be glorified. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Secretary, for the record, please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Farias.
Present.
Commissioner Kerr.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Pedraza.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Present.
Mayor, let the record show, at time of roll call, we have the absence of Commissioner Lopez, and a quorum is present.
Thank you. We move on to Item E, recognitions.
Mayor, tonight, we have two recognitions.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers. My name is Jasmine Rico-Jones, and I am the city's Public Relations Officer. Tonight, we have two presentations. Tonight, we have a certificate of appreciation that's going to be presented to the VFW Post 12178, and if you guys don't mind standing and coming to the front, please. This is in recognition of their outstanding nationally-recognized achievement of over 200 acts of service performed in and around the city of Weslaco for the year 2019-2020. So, we'd like to present this certificate of appreciation for them on behalf of Mayor Adrian Gonzalez and the Weslaco City Commission.
Can you give us a few minutes? Some of us work from all ages, different wars throughout the years, and our oldest members just take a little longer than the rest of us.
Can you also tell us why we have this sign here tonight?
Absolutely. First of all, my name is Pita Perez. I am the VFW Veteran Support Work Post Commander for the Calderon Daily Memorial VFW Post here in Weslaco. In 2018, we decided to charter a VFW post here in Weslaco because we saw the need that we have so many veterans that are having to go to other cities like Elsa and Donna to join. So, we needed one here, and we also needed to service our community, our youth, and still patriotism and Americanism in our community, and that's why we're here. We also honor our first responders like our police, our firemen, our EMT, our nurses. We have a lot of awards, and one of the things that I told our new mayor and our commissioners that we've worked with through these years is that we want to embed ourselves and be part of the city of Weslaco. We're excited in the growth of the city of Weslaco. So, we want to be here. We want to take care of our own and, at the same time, contribute to the growth and be part of beautiful Weslaco. Thank you. So, this sign here that you see with the mayor is, "It's your post like Elsa, Texas. That's one of my hometowns. Fifty, almost 50 years to obtain." Our post obtained this recognition, as you can see the year on it. It's 2019-2020 year and a record two years since our inception, with over 200 projects that we did within our community, which includes honor guards for those veterans who have passed away. So, we want to continue doing that. We want to continue bringing light and putting Weslaco on the map at the national level. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. And you can put that on your streets because that's what it's for, or then even here, it belongs somewhere in the city of Weslaco. Thank you. Thank you.
Day, and I'd like to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas there are nearly 2.5 million farmworkers in the United States, and whereas in the United States, agriculture is a thriving industry that provides $1.1 trillion in economic impact and provides food for a U.S. population of more than 328 million, as well as all of our global people. And whereas in the Rio Grande Valley sector, the agriculture industry creates an economic impact of $1.6 billion annually. And whereas farmworkers provide all Americans with access to safe, healthy, and affordable food, and farmworkers are the critical first step in our food supply chain. And whereas farmworkers are always essential and often unseen in their contribution to the foods we purchase. And whereas farmworkers make up less than 1% of all of the U.S. wage and salaried workers. And whereas farmworkers perform highly skilled, arduous labor that is often taken for granted, often performing work locally in life-threatening temperatures. And whereas farmworkers continue to work through, meet, and exceed the challenges of Mother Nature, working under pressure through pandemics and other global challenges. And whereas the need for farmworkers continues to grow as the U.S. continues to produce food for an ever-growing world population. And whereas the large majority of farmworkers are immigrants and approximately 36% lack authorized work status under current U.S. laws. And whereas our local farmworkers contribute to the picking, the packing, and distribution of the crops we put on our grocery shelves and on our kitchen tables daily. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Adrian Gonzalez of the city of Weslaco, by virtue of the authority vested in him, on behalf of the Weslaco City Commission, does hereby proclaim March 15th, this is in advance, of Farm Worker Appreciation Day in Weslaco, Texas, and asks all residents to join in honoring our always essential farmworkers."
I believe, and we had a great conversation in how we can help each other and the goals that you have set for your post, and I know myself and the rest of the commission is in full support of all veterans, and I know we've said it many times, Veterans' Day should be celebrated every day, you know, for all your service and sacrifice that you have done for not only us but our, you know, the whole country. So, I want to thank you guys and congratulations once again.
Thank you very much.
And for the farmworkers, for the Appreciation Day, it's huge. Commissioner Farias makes fun of me, but my dad was, is a farmer, so I know all that life, and I know the, you know, all the work and hard work that all the individuals do because I was out there doing it myself. So, it's huge, and I want to congratulate you and recognize you, and hopefully that month is great, and I believe you all are having something in March.
Yeah, March.
Awesome, I'll be there. Thank you. We move on to public comments, ma'am.
Mayor, tonight, we have one public comment. We have Mr. Randy Hall.
Good evening. Randy Hall, 1400 El Paco Drive. Well, I'm going to do something tonight that's a little different than what I normally do. I'm going to thank the mayor, I'm going to thank the city manager, I'm going to thank Commissioner Rodriguez, I'm going to thank the Assistant City Manager for all the work that they've done to help the VFW Post 12178. We, what this, tonight is about and what's on the agenda, I think it's number F after the, after the executive session, E or F, whatever. We are asking for a piece of property to establish a VFW post permanent home, and there is a piece of property, and I think you're going to talk about it in the executive session. And so, all the work that's been done so far, we really appreciate it, and we thank you. We thank you. So, I want to talk a little bit about our commander, Commander Perez. She is not a big lady, but she's got a big heart and big ideas and big plans and big dreams for this VFW post, and we call her Commander Perez of our post. But in Iraq and in Kuwait, they called her Sergeant Perez, and I'll bet that nobody messed with Sergeant Perez. And she will tell you that because this piece of property we're talking about is going to take a lot of work. It's rough. But she will tell you that you give her a dump truck and an end loader, and she will move the earth, and she will. And so, we need to give her, you need to give her a chance to do with this property what her dream is, and she'll do it. And so, we're asking for your help and give her a chance, and she will make you proud, and she'll make the veterans that we're going to serve proud. The unique thing about this VFW post, and Mr. Matalvo just asked me just a minute ago, "Why don't you meet at the Legion Hall or the VFW Hall or the Catholic War Veterans?" And I told him, "We're not a drinking group. We don't, we don't go to our meetings to drown our sorrows, okay? We meet at the First Baptist Church," and they don't do much of that. So, that's the uniqueness about this particular post. We are focused on serving the veterans and not serving ourselves a quick drink. So, that's what we're all about, and if you'll help us, we'll make great things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Mayor, Ms. Mirna Ivada would like to say a few words.
Sure.
And you state your name, please. And you state your name, sir.
My name is Jose Torres. I am an employee of Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid, and first and foremost, I want to, you know, say hello to the folks here in the commission, the mayor, and all the commissioners. You know, the proclamation that, you know, the lady just read, it pretty much tells everything in regards to what I want to say, but I just want to say a few words that come from, you know, the office, and that is that, you know, we thank you for giving us this opportunity to come before you in regards to the farmworker community. Of course, you know, my coworker, Yvette, Mirna, and a few others that are not, were not able to hear, come here today, and my compañera Lupita. And as you well know, you know, based on the proclamation, the agricultural business here in El Valle, you know, and also throughout the nation, has been made what it is today based on the labor of the farmworker community. We cannot deny that fact. Unfortunately, you know, the farmworker community is not given the recognition that they so rightfully deserve for the longest time. We at Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid advocate for the farmworker rights and are delighted that the city of Weslaco has taken the decision to declare March as the Farmworker Month in recognition of the tremendous sacrifices that the farmworker community has done in regards to agri-business, and as it was said before, in regards to the $1.6 billion that is in circulation here in El Valle. And thanks to the farmworker community, you know, a lot of us, you know, are able to have a little bit of a better life than just earning $7.25 an hour, and a lot of times, unfortunately, these farmworkers are not even paid that amount, and that's why TRA exists. Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
Before we go to public comments, I want to take it out of order and go to Item S on new business. And I believe it's Discussion and Consideration of Resolution 2024-33, Supporting the Work in Texas as a Primary Platform for Increasing Job-Matching Activities in Hidalgo County and Authorizing Mayor to Execute Any Relating Documents, Possible Action.
Yes, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor and City Commission. We do have Mr. Mario Reyna from the Prosperity Task Force, and also, I believe, we do have Mr. Frank Alvarez, Almaraz, I'm sorry, the CEO for the Workforce Solution, and Jaime Longoria, do you all mind coming up to the podium, Mr. Reyna, appreciate it? This item, as you all know, the Prosperity Task Force is a task force that was put together by Judge Richard Cortez and the County Commission not too long ago. They're basically, you know, a group of people that have, are trying to basically bring the levels of low or poverty in the county of Hidalgo, you know, up, and, you know, through working through different organizations, social services, workforce solutions, to be able to address poverty in the county of Hidalgo and bring some, some improvement to all that in prosperity. So, I know Mario plays a big role in this task force. We thank you for your presence, and what we have here today, Mayor and Commission, is a resolution that they're requesting, you know, to be able to support a platform that they use to promote online, you know, job seekers, and it's called workintexas.com. And Mario, do you want to talk a little bit about what this platform does for our people in here in Hidalgo County?
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Mayor, Mayor Gonzalez, thank you so much. Commissioners, thank you so much for your time. You know, we started this journey a few years ago, and one of the things that we're trying to do is lift everybody up in our county. So, one of the things that we have found out is that Work in Texas is a platform that is very useful for everybody. The judge always is asking, you know, who is hiring and who is looking for a job? Well, Work in Texas is that platform, and we're very happy to have Frank Almaraz, who is the CEO, with us, and he'll tell you a little bit more.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor. Work in Texas is really the platform for job matching, and a lot of the challenges that job seekers have is because some of the systems are too complicated. Work in Texas is fairly simple, and we also have staff that are always there to help both the job seekers and the employers, so that if they need a help in helping input what they need and what they want, and then we match them up, and we feel like there's going to be an increase in hiring by the use of this platform.
We also have Jaime Longoria, who's with the Workforce Solution Board.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'd like to, first of all, thank you on behalf of the Board of Workforce for this opportunity to further our relationship between workforce and the city of Weslaco. We just recently had our strategic planning meeting where representatives from throughout the region got together, and we discussed some of the things that we could do better, and we recognized that the relationship between the cities, the EDCs, and the workforce organization needs to be improved. And if we expect to lift people out of poverty and into prosperity, we want to do that. So, this is a big step in doing that, and we certainly appreciate your consideration and your vote in support of this resolution.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys, and yes, Work in Texas is a, is a great software program that you have. I'm very familiar with it. I'm pretty sure things have changed since 2003 when I used it, because I was, I was employed with workforce as one of my first jobs. So, I used to use Work in Texas a lot as a developer, working, the job developer, and matched, you know, the employment, so you put your information in, it matches you with different jobs that you, that it matches you up to. So, no, we appreciate you guys, and yes, great things.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution 24, 2024-33.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve Item S as discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll oppose. Motion passes.
Mayor, I just want to take the opportunity to thank these gentlemen. I mean, I know they do a lot for the county of Hidalgo in trying to, you know, bring that level of poverty up and assist people who are looking for jobs and better their lives and their, and their family's lives. So, thank you for all that you do and the Commissioners' Court as well. Thank you.
Okay, we go back to public hearings. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we open it up.
Public hearing A. To solicit and put on, on the proposed demolition order for unoccupied buildings as dilapidated, substandard, unfit for human habitation, and a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Weslaco as per Weslaco Code of Ordnances, Chapter 26, Article 8, unsanitary and dangerous buildings, Section 26-225, located at 1615 North Republic Street, Bien Hudge, Addition, Block 3, Lots 3 and 4, owner Alta Gracia Vira Montes, et al. Number 2 is 219 South Texas Boulevard, being original townsite of Weslaco, Block 13, East 31, Lot 26, owner Norma Lopez and Tomasita Hernandez. Number 3, 804 North Palmas, Bien Esplanada, Subdivision, Block 19, Lots 12 through 14, owner Jose Sosa. Number 4, 516 North Sinclair, Bien Villa Vista, Number 2, Subdivision, Block 9, Lots 9 and 10, owner Tomar Amador. Number 5, 413 East Agustadero Street, Bien Gonzales, Subdivision, Block 13, Lot 14, owner Felipe Anila. Number 6, 617 East Plaza, Bien Ramona, Subdivision, Addition, Subdivision, Block 7, Lot 25, Weslaco, Hidalgo County, Texas, owner Jose and Victoria Garza. Number B, to solicit and put on behalf of Tomasita Hernandez to approve a conditional use permit to operate an event center at 219 South Texas Boulevard, also being Lot 26, Block 13, Weslaco Regional Townsite, Weslaco, Hidalgo County, Texas. C, to solicit and put on behalf of Alan DeWate to approve a conditional use permit for Stefano's Pizza Express to obtain a wine and malt beverage retailer's on-premise permit at 636 East Interstate Highway 2, Suite 105, also being Lot 3, shops at North Bridge, Subdivision, Weslaco, Hidalgo County, Texas.
May I share a comment? Go ahead.
I just, I guess I need some clarification. A, we have to solicit and put on the proposed demolition order for unoccupied buildings as dilapidated, substandard, unfit for human habitation, but B here, to solicit input on behalf of same owner, to approve a conditional use permit to operate an event center.
That's correct, sir. Ms. Rebecca is going to give a quick overview on that.
So, just as a quick overview on that item for Tomasita, you don't have to change, that's okay. Her item, when presented to BOAB, our building codes, was allowed a 12-month extension to try and rehab the building. She does have her architectural analysis done showing that the building is structurally sound.
Okay. Just threw me off a little bit.
Right, no, I understand.
We can inhabit it, but yet we want to have something.
Yeah, and we'll go into detail when we present the item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anybody to speak on behalf of anything?
Move to close public hearing.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Farias to close public hearings.
Mayor, before you close, if I may, because I know we do have a property owner, which is a property in question, Tomasita Hernandez, she speaks Spanish only, and so I just want to give her the opportunity. Que si tiene cualquier este comentario que quiere decir, ahorita es el momento de hacer comentarios públicos. Usted tiene ahorita tres minutos para presentar cualquier cosa que usted presentar de su, de lo que quiere hacer con su negocio y lo que está proponiéndole a la ciudad. Este, porque después de esos tres minutos entonces ya el mayor y la comisión van a tomar una decisión en su caso. So, si quiere hacer un comentario, este es el momento, mis hermanos.
This is for Item B.
This would be for both.
Two and B.
That's correct.
Good evening. So, my name is Paola Candanos. I'll be speaking on behalf of my mother, Tomasita Hernandez.
Thank you.
So, we got the 12 month, the 12 months to complete the remodeling or reconstruction of the building, and we were hoping to get permission to build an event center there. We have gotten all, we have gotten checked for, gotten it checked for Alvestos, we've gotten an engineer to go look at it, architects, and we are ready to begin as soon as we get the approval. So, I don't know if you all have any questions on regards to any of that, or if you all want to see any of the documents.
Is this the building that I went to go visit?
Yes.
That's next to Canos, Canos.
No, I'm good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Farias to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We move on to reports. Item A, infomark. Mr. George.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Garza. So, flow at the water treatment. So flow at the water treatment plant for the month of January was at 5.7 million gallons per day. That is a, the water plant operated at 44% of its capacity. The north wastewater treatment plant, flow was 2.1. And for the month of January, they also operated at 44% of its capacity. The south wastewater treatment plant had a flow of 1.6 and for the month of January, operated at 67% of its capacity. Work orders for the month of January, there was 438 total open and 407 of these work orders that were completed and closed. Lift station electrical repairs for the month of January, we had lift station 33, we had a breaker that we replaced. And a lift station 12, we had a breaker and a relay that were placed. So these two lift stations are vital to the city because lift station 37 provides the flow to the south plant. And lift station 12 provides the flow to the north wastewater treatment plant. So key, key repairs that were, that were made on the electrical side. Lift station pump D ragging continues. January 18, 20, 26, 12, 14, 29, and 38 were all cleaned up, targeted as, as being clogged up. So operators have to go in there and fix that up. Lift station pump signal floats, we had several throughout the lift station, 28, 3, 12, 29, 36, 37, and 48. And I've mentioned before, these are the signals that send signal to the pumps for them to turn on and off and ensure they are working. A callouts for the month of January, as you can see here, a lot of them are due to the photos, the two slides that I just previously talked about. Capital repairs, lift station 17, new pump was approved and a PO issued. Lift station 42, new pump was approved and a PO issued. Rotor repairs at the south wastewater treatment plant was approved and a PO was issued as well. And at the north plant, a VFD for the belt press, that PO was also issued. Update on the generator transfer switches. So we have had one company come out and assess the switches. And they've provided a quote to come in and do a more in-depth look and to see what's wrong with these generators, generator switches. So we're awaiting at least two more visits. So as soon as those come in, we'll update you on those as well. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, George.
I have a, I have a question, just real quick, in regards to, I think we got an email or a text, a couple of days, in regards to possible shortage of water.
So what happened there is the irrigation department was doing some work at embankment. So they were running their flow at low flow than the normal, not at full capacity. So that made our reservoir lower as well because of the low flow. So because of that, we were pulling more water than what was coming in. So it made the reservoir even lower. So we contacted the irrigation department, Mr. Garza called a meeting, and we all talked about it. So we were able to agree for them to turn on the bigger pump and give us full flow. So at the same time, we also discovered that the inlet to the reservoir was clogged up. So in cooperation from Public Works, they took an excavator out there, unclogged the inlet. So we were getting the 100% maximum flow into the reservoir. So we are already filling up. We're up to probably half of what was missing in there. We should be full by tomorrow, is my, my estimation, so.
Mr. George, whose responsibility is to go out there and check all that stuff?
So it is our responsibility to check the reservoir level. But I believe we were just not doing it enough to check in on that. So we've put in a protocol, forwarded the standard operating procedure for checking the reservoir to Mr. Garza. So different levels, we even did some markings on the embankment of the reservoir so that if it reaches a certain level, we start monitoring, increasing the monitoring of the reservoir. When it gets to another level, we start making phone calls to the irrigation. And once it gets to the devil, which is like halfway or low, we're going to escalate that to Mr. Garza and get whoever we need to get on the phone to work out the issue.
George, is there some equipment that we can install on the reservoir as a contingency, just in case for some reason somebody's not monitoring, that will send an alert?
So that's a good question. Mr. Garza asked us to look into such device. It's called a transducer. So it monitors the level of the, of the, any level of water in any area. So in this case, it could get hooked up to the SCADA at the water plant. And, you know, it'd be easy to look on there and while we're also making our visuals.
What's it called again?
A transducer. Yes, sir.
You mentioned that there was something that was obstructed?
Yeah, the inlet.
Oh, and who, whose job is to also monitor that? Or to make sure that there's no obstructions to avoid situations such as this?
So it's tough to see when it's, if the canal is completely full, it's tough to see what's underneath it. So we only noticed it because the canal was lowered at that time. So that's when we.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I know there has to be some type of way because, I mean, it's not always going to be at that level. And if it isn't that level, if it's low, I mean, that means it's, we're going to be reactive.
Yeah, of course.
You know, I know I've said several times, we have to stop being reactive with things. We need to start being proactive.
Correct.
And not have incidents like this happen until, and then we start moving on things. If there, and I know Mr. Garza, you know, explained to me about certain devices, and I think you just explained the two, that we, that we can purchase and stuff that could help us with that, right?
Yes, sir.
But it should have never gone to that point where it has to, where this has to happen for us to go out there and say, oh, well, we need to, we need to get this, we need to get that. Like, let's, we need to start being proactive.
Yes, sir.
Because this could have been extremely bad on the city if something would have happened, you know? So I don't know how you guys do it or what you guys can do, but we need to make sure that all these things are maintained and not allow the water. I mean, because again, you, you just said that, well, if the water goes low, then there was no way because it's full. Well, it's supposed to always be full.
Yeah.
You know, so we need to find a way of, or plan out a way that we can make sure that we clean all these inlets.
Yeah.
And make sure that they're clean at all times, you know, to avoid a certain situation like we just did.
Correct. We'll, we'll add that to our SOP and revise that. And I'll submit it to Mr. Garza as well.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll go on next to item B, animal care services. It's his day today.
My time to shine.
I don't know if y'all, we'll start off, I don't know if y'all remember this little guy, not so little anymore, but he was the first mayor of the week when you came into office. It is.
A buddy.
Winchester, he actually just came in to get vaccines. And the owner's going to come pick him up, so he'll go home right after this. We just thought we'd show him off for a little bit.
Beautiful dog.
Very happy.
Very. So here we go. On January 2024, our live release rate for our dogs was 78%. And then for our cats, we've maintained that 100%. And for overall, it's been 80%. And just here, you see, we've maintained that progress at 80% since October of last year. And again, we're at 100%. I think it's seven months, seven months now that we've kept 100% live release rate on the cats. We have new partners. We added another grooming salon to our, to our partnership. And these are two dogs that just recently got groomed. And they're both adopted as well. The one on the left is in my house, so, yeah. And then, as always, our staff goes above and beyond. We transported 14 dogs. These are three of the 14 puppies that got transported over to Corpus Christi for them to find their forever homes. We had an adoption event where 10 dogs slash puppies found their forever homes. And these are a couple of pictures of, of those puppies. We also held a rabies clinic at Morenos where there was a good turnout. A lot of Weslaco pets and the community, RGB community, dogs got vaccinated there. On, was it two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, we had another adoption event where 11 dogs got adopted. Or eight, we took 11 dogs, eight dogs were, were adopted out that day, all within the first two hours of our event. I think we were there from, from 9:00 to 12:00. By 10:00, we were closing out two dogs we needed to find homes for. And then we want to say thank you to Margot Elementary and Ms. Mariscal and the Kindness Club for donating all the items you see there and getting an outpour of donations for our community. It was, it was great to see the kids and learning, you know, responsibility and all the donations that they, that they gave. It was, it's amazing. All of our dogs got good treats that day. And this is one of our special cases. This one, he had an embedded collar on his neck. Within seven hours, we were able to raise $600 to get him to the vet. I do have to say, thank Chris over there in the back for being able to trank the dog. It took us 45 minutes to go through fields to catch this dog to be able to help him. So him and I were running, literally running after this dog. And it, I was tired that day, so.
Was it that Saturday, you said?
That Friday. But the dog is safe. The dog is doing great. He is actually leaving a rescue on Friday. He's social now, and that's why his name is Runner, because he's, he's a runner. And I don't know if you all remember, we had a cruelty case back in 2022. His name was Lucky. So we have an update on him. He did go to rescue about two months ago. And now Lucky got adopted in Clearwater, Florida. He was transferred out to Tracy's Paws. From Tracy's Paws, he went to Clearwater, Florida this Saturday. And these are pictures that I got from his adopters. We're close friends now. So this is a little bit of what your Weslaco Animal Care Services does. Even if the dog goes out to rescue, we still keep in touch with the adopters if we have the ability to. Because, you know, cases like Lucky are, are something. And he, he went through a lot. And to finally see him go home, it means a lot to Rebecca, it means a lot to Chris and all of the staff. It was a year of fighting for him. So happy ending for him. End it.
And I just want to report that, you know, we had a breakfast meeting, myself, Rebecca and the team, with a couple of the organizations, PetSmart, Petco, Best Friends, and I don't know who else was there. And we had a conversation with the group, and I think it turned out really well. I know the staff gave their piece. And we, we all came to a good, I guess, ending. And we're all here to work together and help, help out each other. And I'm glad and I thank you guys for going on a Saturday morning. Thank you, guys.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We move on to consent agenda. If there's anything that any of the Commissioners would like to pull? If there's nothing?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We go on to appointments.
Appointments A. Discussion and consideration on Resolution 2024-29. Appointing members to the Recycling Task Force Committee and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action. Mayor, tonight, for the recycling committee, we have two vacant positions that have been vacant for a while. And we have two applicants. We have Ms. Delma Cadena, and she's been nominated by Commissioner Leti Lopez. And we have a Mr. Emiliano Montenegro, and he is being nominated by Commissioner Josh Pedraza for appointment.
I'm to approve.
Check. We have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve the nominees appointed. All in favor? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Normal, you can go ahead and let them know?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
We move on to item B.
Item B, Mayor, is discussion and consideration to approve Resolution 2024-30. Appointing members to the ambulance advisory board and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action. Mayor, tonight, we have two vacancies for the ambulance advisory board. We have one that we are going to fill. And that was, again, Ms. Delma Cadena has expressed interest in serving on this advisory board. And he, she is being nominated by Commissioner Gray Kerr.
All righty. And then the second one is by me, right?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and give you that name this week.
Okay, sir. We'll bring it back to the next meeting.
I'm to approve.
Check. We have a motion by Commissioner Orias and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item B and nominated, in the name of the nominee. All in favor? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We move on to old business, and we are going to take no action on item A for old business.
That's correct, sir. That's on behalf of the request of the developer. Correct, Ms. Rebecca?
Yes, sir.
All righty, then we move on to new business, item A.
Item A. Discussion and consideration after public hearing to authorize demolition order for unoccupied building as dilapidated, substandard, unfit for human habitation and a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Weslaco as per Weslaco Code of Ordnances, Chapter 26, Article 8, unsanitary and dangerous buildings, Section 26-225, properly located at number 1, 219 South Texas Boulevard, being original townsite of Weslaco, Block 13, E31, Lot 26. Owner, Norma Lopez and Tomasita Hernandez. Number 2, 615 North Republic Street, being Hedges Addition, Block 3, Lots 3 and 4. Owner, Alta Grasa Vira Montes and all. Number 3, 804 North Palmas, being Esplanada Subdivision, Block 19, Lots 12 through 14. Owner, Jose Sosa. Number 4, 516 North Sinclair, being Via Vista. Number 2 subdivision, Blocks 9, Lots 9 and 10. Owner, Tomador Amador. Number 5, 617 East Plaza, being Ramona Edition, subdivision Block 7, Lot 25. Owner, Jose and Victoria Garza. Number 6, 2307 East Plaza Street, being West Track Point 339 acres, South 14.4711 AC, North 20 CA Farm Track 17.0339 acres net. Owner, Pedro C. Gonzalez. Number 7, 413 East Agustadero Street, being Gonzales subdivision, Block 13, Lot 14. Owner, Felipe Anila. Number 8, 3716 Canal Street, being Tierra Prometida, Lot 19, Weslaco Dade County, Texas. Owner, Abel Ramon, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
So our, our presentation might be a little out of order. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. We're just going to jump through it. The first item we have is 219 South Texas. I imagine we would be taking separate action on each address?
Um.
Yes, sir.
I would say so because of the.
It would probably be easier to handle each one individually because I think there's different.
There's different outcomes for each.
Okay.
Okay. So this is 219 South Texas. This is a property owned by Tomasita, right here on North Texas. We went out there and we did our inspections. Mr. Maldonado is the investigating officer for our demos. She did present to our BOAB board structural analysis provided by an engineer, showing that the building is actually structurally sound and is able to be rehabbed. What BOAB is recommending is to allow her a 12-month extension to finish those renovations. And these are kind of the photos of what, what, how the building looks on the inside.
Okay. Okay, so when we go about this, we make, what's your recommendation?
Staff's recommendation is, is going to be for demolition, but you guys can uphold BOAB's recommendation, which is to allow her a twelve-month extension.
Why is the recommendation still demolition if it's structurally sound?
Because of how long the building has been in this condition.
Which is how long?
It's been several years. It's been allowed to deteriorate, but she does have a plan in place, and if you guys are willing to, we could allow her the twelve months, and if at the end of the twelve months she's not complete, then we bring it back.
But she has the plans and everything, right?
She is working on them, yes. She's, she, she's going to turn them in, I believe, tomorrow.
But I guess it needs to come back because it's, I guess, unsanitary, or what's the basis for demolition now that it's structurally sound?
That it's blight.
Blight, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, she just purchased it, purchased it from the other owner.
I'll move to give a twelve-month extension.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Ruiz to approve the twelve-month extension. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The next one on the list is six fifteen North Republic. These are some of the photos that were taken. Have the front, the rears. What it looks like on the inside. No owner has made contact with staff. They did not attend the BOAB, so our board is recommending to proceed with demolition.
Move to proceed with demolition.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Ruiz to approve demolition. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number three.
Eight oh four North Palmas. This is the front of the building. Here, here's the rear. This is what it looks like on the inside. More photos of the sides. This is the interior again. You can see the roof is falling in. Floors are rotting out. So one of the daughters did make contact with staff, but she is in agreement that the building does need to come down, and BOA has recommended demolition.
She is in agreement, you said?
In agreement.
Move to proceed with demolition.
Sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve demolition. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number four.
Five sixteen North Sinclair. It's a little rough. This is the interior of the home. The roofs are caving in, the walls are falling apart. Another daughter did come forward about this one, too, but she is also in agreement that the building does need to come down, and BOA has recommended demolition.
Rebecca, just, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In this process, them giving you permission, are they accepting the fees that are coming with it?
Yes, if, if they don't tear it down within the sixty days that we have waiting period, then we go and we tear it down, and we do assess those fees against them. So they are in the understanding either it's them or it's us.
Are they familiar with what those fees could be?
It's all assessed depending on hallway and equipment and time. Average home of this size would probably be about about forty-six hundred, maybe.
Thank you. That attaches a lien to the property, I guess?
Yes, if they, we give them thirty days to pay an invoice, and if they don't, then we, we send out a lien.
Move to proceed with demolition.
Check. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to go ahead and move for the demolition. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number five.
Number five is six seventeen East Plaza. This is what the interior of the building looks like. You can see the disrepair in the, in the walls and the roof. There are several children that own the property, but none of them are willing to step up, so staff and BOA are recommending immediate demolition.
Move to proceed with demolition.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve demolition. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Move on to number six.
Twenty-three oh seven East Plaza Street. This one did come before you guys last year. They did receive an extension. He has made no progress. He understands that it needs to come down. He is attempting to tear it down himself, but he only has sixty days. Otherwise, we, we are hoping to go in there and finish the job for him if he cannot. Staff and BOA are recommending immediate demo.
Where is this one at?
Plaza in Gemstone. So King Estates, just north on the Y. Yeah. So I believe this is our fourth time pursuing this project, this property. And we did give him a, a dumpster through our clean sweep program, but we only gave him one just to kind of incentivize him to get it done.
And he hasn't.
He, he's, he's, yeah. We offered.
It is, I guess it's structurally unsound?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not good. We, we can go through the insides. It's just, it's very old, it's very dilapidated.
My concern is somebody goes inside and gets hurt or something is.
Right, I mean, that's, I went too far. Yeah.
Move to proceed with demolition.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve demolition. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seven.
So this is four thirteen Isa Gusadeto. The owner has come forward. She has started doing the renovations. So BOAB is granting her a six-month extension for the remodel. She's pretty much fixed the outside. Now she's working on the interior.
Has this one come before us before?
No, sir. This is first.
Move to approve a six-month extension.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve the six-month extension. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number eight.
Thirty-seven sixteen Cannon Street. This one did come before us last year. We did give them some time to finish. The new owner has gone ahead and pulled out his remodeling permit, and he's working towards that. So BOAB is recommending that we allow him to continue his, his attempt at remodeling until the permit expires, which be, which would be October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
So we're giving them?
Until October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. If he's not done by the time his permit expires, then we bring it back, and you guys will reconsider the item.
Okay.
Motion to approve the extension.
Sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ruiz and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve the, or to pretty much give him till.
Live out the life of their permit.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We move on to item B.
Item B, discussion consideration after public hearing on behalf of Tomasita Hernandez to approve a conditional use permit to operate an event center at two nineteen South Texas Boulevard, also being lot twenty-six, block thirteen, Wesco, original townsite, Wesco, Del County, Texas, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Thank you. The applicant noticed appearing on the monitor on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. We notified twenty-three property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius and have not received any petitions for or against. Ms. Tomasita's item was granted a twelve-month extension, and she's just wanting to make sure that she can still get an event center at this location.
I'm to.
P and Z is, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Just a question. How long is the conditional use permit good for?
A year. So she has to start it within a year, otherwise she has to come back for either an extension or she has to reapply.
Okay, and I guess, I, I guess I don't remember if I've seen it like this before, but I guess some of the conditions would be it has to be habitable and.
Yes, I, we can make that a condition.
Okay.
So want me to resend my motion, Commissioner Kerr?
Alright, there's a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item B as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We move on to item C.
Item C, discussion and consideration after public hearing on behalf of Alan Dewey to obtain a wine and malt beverage retailer's on-premise permit for Stefano's Pizza Express located at six thirty-six East Interstate Highway two, Suite one oh five. Also being lot three shops at North Bridge subdivision, Wesco, Del County, Texas, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Notice appeared on the monitor on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. We notify eleven property owners within the two-hundred-foot radius and have not received any petitions for or against. This is for the proposed Stefano's Pizza Express, and it's going to be primarily a restaurant, so P and Z and staff are recommending approval.
I'm to move. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Ruiz to approve item C as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We move on to item D.
Item D, discussion consideration on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one for disannexation requests from the property owner of eighteen oh two South International Boulevard, being a one point one six-six AC out of north, two-ten point ten FT of the east, two forty-two FT of Farm Track one zero zero nine Adams Track subdivision, Wesco, Del County, Texas, located on the southwest corner of Interstate FM ten fifteen and mile six north, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, possible action.
So this is the existing site in Nanas Tacaria. It came into the city about two years ago with the understanding that sewer would be provided to them. That has not happened at this time, so they are requesting disannexation. P and Z recommended it against the disannexation. Staff is recommending approval.
Staff is recommending approval?
Yes, sir.
Because it meets the requirements, I guess?
Once he deannexes, if, if that's how we vote, is he able to request?
Will his family come back in?
No.
Voluntarily, they could.
No, sir.
Voluntarily, they could.
There's a certain period of time that the staff would have to wait before we can even entertain reannexing them.
Because he voluntarily annexed about a year ago.
Uh, two. He, he came in two years ago.
But I believe we discussed about, we can say about the line, right?
Absolutely. So, so I had a meeting, I mean, obviously, there's been several meetings with Mr. Trevino and his business. There's been several requests, you know, to the EDC and through this, and to the city regarding sewer, right? And so there is no active sewer line at the moment, you know, going towards his property or in front of his property. And so he's been working, you know, through a septic. He was annexed. What year was that?
It was about two years ago.
So it's been, it's been, you know, about a two-year mark already, and, you know, the city has not been able to provide that utility service to go to his property. You know, one of the reasons we brought him in for a, a meeting was because, you know, through finance, Andrew, myself, we're able to look at some savings on some utility work that is being done, and we're, we're able to bring that sewer. And it's about, Marcelo's here, it's about a little bit more than a thousand feet coming from.
The north.
The north part of ten fifteen, traveling south towards the street that intersects his, his business. And so we're able to, to be able to go in and request qualifications for an engineer to come up with a design and then bring it up for bits, hopefully in the next few meetings. I wanted him to know that prior to him making a, a final decision, him and his family, whether or not they wanted to deannex. They're really at the point that they feel it's, it's best to their interest in their business and their family to move forward with the annexation. He is aware that once the line gets here, you know, hopefully before, you know, before the winter of this year, he would have to connect based on the city ordinance that, that we have in place, and, and he's completely aware of that. He does have water, you know, city water, and he's looking forward for, for the sewer service as well, because he's possibly hoping to expand in, in the near future as well, so that service is going to be very well needed. But at this moment, the decision of the family was to continue having this discussion and this agenda, sir.
He would have to connect regardless, whether he.
Have to connect regardless, once, once we get there, whether he's inside city limits or not, based on ordinance.
And, you know.
And he's okay with it.
Yeah, and, and also with us putting that line, it's for future development in the future, you know what I mean, that we can.
Well, that's the way we're looking at it, right? You know, talking to the EDC and, and obviously our staff, there's vacant land acreage in front of the proposed line that will go through FM ten, ten fifteen, and we suspect that hopefully that will bring some development, will assist the EDC in, in promoting that area of town and, and hopefully, you know, bring that to, to the tax room.
How long do we have to provide the sewer services once we annexed?
So my understanding was that it was supposed to be immediate. My understanding was it was supposed to be immediate. Those were conversations that I was not.
No, I think what the question is, how, by law, by law, how much time do we have to provide the service once you annex?
So, yeah, I wasn't.
No, I, Juan, I think the question is, wh- when we annex a piece of property.
Those service plans were either two or five years.
We have to bring service by how many, it's two years that we have to bring the service. Am I correct or not?
Even if it's voluntary annexed?
That was the agreement for him coming in. So the agreement made between him and previous administration was that he would annex, and we would extend sewer.
Within.
They did not.
Well, we don't have.
No, but within a certain time.
There is no formal agreement. I mean, there's nothing in, in writing that, that, you know, I could find on, regardless of any type of agreement. There's nothing in writing that, that is, you know, in, in our record.
Where does this fit as far as our city limits go? Our, what's it?
That's a lollipop annexation.
So that's not even contiguous to the remainder?
It's contiguous to the road.
What, what's contiguous to the road?
The Nanas Tacaria is contiguous to the road. That's how it's contiguous to the city limits.
Right, but it's, so I guess immediately north on Eighteenth Street, that's not?
Yeah, north it is inside, and so is to the northeast. So Pioneer's Inn.
So the streets are dividing line.
Yeah, streets are dividing line.
Eighteenth is the dividing line.
Yes, sir.
And so everything on that southwest block is outside the city limit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Southwest and southeast. We own ten fifteen all the way down to, just past the state park.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Ruiz and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have three. All against?
No.
No.
And I have two against, so motion passes.
Mayor, was that current Pedraza the voter? No? For the record?
That's correct.
Okay, just for the record. Thank you.
Alrighty, I want to go ahead and move to item P.
Yes, item P is a discussion and consideration to authorize staff to solicit qualifications or statements of qualifications for the collection of delinquent taxes and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action. Mayor, this is one of a couple of professional service contracts that we've been looking at in the past week. You've asked me to bring it to the commission for, you know, any type of discussion or questions that there might be regarding these two items, and this one in particular is the, the services for collection of delinquent taxes. And Ms. Rose, he helped me, how many, how long have we had this contract? And I know we have members representing the company as well. Thank you for being here.
It's been years, sir. I, I don't recall the exact amount.
Yeah, no, I brought, I, I brought this up, you know, just so, again, I'm, I'm new, so I wanted just to go out there and see what we can do, and, and when was the last time that we had a presentation on, on behalf of?
It was pre-COVID.
Twenty nineteen?
Yeah, twenty twenty, like, yeah.
Before that, I guess.
Before.
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen anything.
I think their contract, probably two thousand seventeen?
Seventeen, and, and I'd like to address the commission.
That's up to the mayor.
Yeah, and I did get a call from Mr. Romel Cantu, one of the representatives for, for the firm. And that's a conversation we had, and that's kind of what stirred up looking into, into the professional service contract, and so, but that's where we're at today.
Yeah, and again, it was just, I just think that we just need to go out and see what we, you know, not saying that we're going to dismiss anybody or anything like that, but to see what's out there and keep, you know, I know that, again, there is multiple, but I just wanted to see what's out there.
Like to try to get better rates or, or what, in particular, I guess?
No, I mean, it's just that, you know, like we just said, there was no, we haven't had a presentation since twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen?
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, I don't know what it was. Pre-COVID, so.
I don't recall it.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the record, my name is Iram Gutierrez, I'm a partner with Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott, your delinquent tax firm. And, uh, we have been representing the firm since twenty seventeen. Um, we have requested to, uh, report to the commission and we have submitted reports in the past. But we've never been asked to actually come in, present before you, and I'm sorry, not never, but in the recent, uh, recent couple of years. Um, we have submitted reports, uh, we have been since November asking to come in, present, but I know. Y'all are very busy and have a lot of other important items on the agenda. Uh, we're very proud of the work we've been doing for the city of Weslaco. Um, the collection program for the city is exemplary. City of Weslaco has some of the best current collections of any entity here in the Holy Dalo County. And by current, I mean, uh, your new year. It gets, uh, the new year starts in, in, uh, in October, uh, that's when the tax bill comes out. And then the, the county reports it for the next twelve months. Uh, the last three months of your fiscal year, those collections are being, actually being collected by Purdue Brandon. And we help you attain some of the best collection rates of any city here in Dalo County. It also means that you don't turn over very much to your delinquent tax roll. Uh, very little money gets turned over to your delinquent tax roll compared to other entities. Um, if you look at your delinquency over the last seven years, it has kept, kept on, uh, uh, reducing. Um, what I mean by that is, every year, you turn over the delinquency. We get to work on that delinquency, uh, we collect a certain percentage. At the end of the year, there's still delinquency left, you can't collect everything. A lot of accounts that have deferrals, for example, your over sixty-fives, um, your exempt people. You have, uh, uh, many people that are, uh, in need, that can, you know, cannot pay their taxes. The commission has asked us to work with those taxpayers. Uh, in fact, we have not sold any taxing, uh, any properties that have a homestead here in the city of Weslaco at the request of this commission. So, you have some of the best collections of any entity here, your delinquency keeps on reducing, every year, we've been able to reduce your delinquency. Every year, you turn over more delinquency, we collect more than what you turn over. Um, so again, we're very proud, we, we, I really had hoped to be able to present this to you. Um, an actual report, it's very difficult to come here and just ad libit without any, any, uh, any presentation, without any, uh, uh, slides for you. But we'd like to have that opportunity, uh, we've tried to get here before you and, uh, if, uh, if possible, we'd like to have that opportunity. We've served you, served your, your, uh, city with integrity, with honesty. We treat all your taxpayers like if they were family. We'd like to continue with the city of Weslaco, if allowed.
No, and I, and I thank you, Mr. Gutierrez, I really, uh, really appreciate, you know, uh, your, your words. Um, at this time, you know, I would like, I don't know, um, how anyone else feels?
Yeah, I just had a question, you know, uh, you mentioned you were reaching out to the city and you weren't getting a response to, to provide these reports. I know I've mentioned it to y'all a couple of times, I've wanted to see a report over the past several years, how you've improved or not improved or how we're doing in general. Who, who were you, who were you talking to that wasn't responding to you?
Oh, I'm not saying they were responding, uh, uh, Mr. Farias. Uh, we, uh, we, we've spoken to Mr. Garza and, and, uh, and we have, uh, we have requested to be put on the agenda and it just hasn't been. The city hasn't been able to accommodate us, we understand that, you have much more important things to, to, to do than, than deal with this contract. But, uh, but if allowed, we'd like to be able to do that.
The calls that I received, Mr. Gutierrez, was from Mr. Romel Cantú.
That's correct.
The first call I got, it was about two weeks ago.
Yeah, no, but, but before that, we've, we've, uh, contacted Romeo, Romeo Cantú, like you said, has, uh, reached out to the city. Uh, we've just been told, uh, hold on, hold on, and, uh. Uh, and again, we have submitted reports, it's not that we have not submitted reports, it's that we submitted them, then we were not asked to come before you and, and, uh, have the opportunity to present.
Mr. Garza, you've been here for two years, right?
I've been here for, um, April will be two years, but the only contact that has been made to me was to Romel Cantú and that was about two weeks ago, sir. And I, that's when we started the, the discussions, uh, myself with the mayor.
And I know he has reached out to other staff members, I know, Mr. Garza, you're, uh, very busy, hard to get, get ahold of you, that's, that's completely understood. Uh, but, we like to have the opportunity, we're not afraid to, to come before you. Uh, we'd like to show you what we've done, we'd like to show you how we reduce your delinquency over the, over the past five, seven years. Um, it's, it's, it's really exemplary, the, your, your collection program, uh, it's truly a jewel. It's, it's, it's one of the best collections. I know that, that they, uh, our competitor maybe is talking to you and they come in, well, your delinquent tax rate collections are, are X amount. Well, you're not looking at what are your currents like, how much is being actually turned over? What is happening to the delinquency here? Is your delinquency growing or is it shrinking? City of Weslaco shrink, has shrunk. It's one of the largest decreases in delinquency of, of any other city here in, in, in Dalo County. We're very proud of those collections.
I mean, I, I guess that's what Commissioner Farias is alluding to, uh, is, you know, it would've been nice to have, I know you're saying all this, but it would've been nice to have had like a, a running record. You know, I mean, I'm not saying every month, I'm not saying, you know, maybe quarterly, maybe biennial evenly, I, I mean, I don't know. But, um, it's just, you know, I, I, and, and I guess that's what he's alluding to, we would've had this, we kinda would've known this already. Like, and then Mr. Garza's saying that the first time he spoke to Mr. Romel was a couple of weeks ago.
Correct.
So, uh, again, we've.
And, and again, this is not, I'm, I'm not saying, again, it, it's just going out for SOQs and, uh, it's, it's, doesn't mean that. Anyone's getting dismissed or anything like that.
Well, I understand, Mr. Gutierrez, and, and again, it's, uh, we'd like to have the opportunity, uh, whatever the city, we, we respect the, the city's wishes. Um, but, uh, again, we're very proud of the work we've done here and, and once you have the opportunity to see what your collections are like compared to other entities. You'll see that you have an exemplary program. I, and I mean your overall collection program. Some people will nitpick and say, well, look at this, well, look at the overall picture. Look at what, what is actually being collected on a yearly basis, in fact, if you consider your current collections and your delinquency, you put those together. The city of Weslaco has almost been collecting every single year a hundred percent of your current roll. How do you do that? Well, not everybody pays their, their current collections. But when we get the delinquencies, the, what, what we collect in the deli- delinquency, you put that together and you reach a hundred percent. And the city of Weslaco has been able to do that year after year. Maybe the, during COVID was an exception, but otherwise, it has very good collections. Again, I know some people are gonna nitpick and say, look at this, but look at this number here, look at the overall picture. And you'll see that you have exemplary collections.
And we thank you, Mr. Gutierrez, and if this commission decides to go out for, uh, the RFQs, you know, you'll get that opportunity to, to present and if they don't, you know, we'd like for you to present. You know, so, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Honorable members of the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, any more discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to solicit statements of qualifications.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to go ahead and, um. Go out for RFQs for item B. All in favor, vote by.
I don't, is it SOQs?
SOQs, I'm sorry.
You said item B or P?
P.
P, okay.
For item P, to go out for SOQs. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. We move on to item Q, I believe, right? Yes, item Q.
Uh, yes, Mayor, item Q is a discussion and possible action on professional services contract for city prosecutor services for the Weslaco Municipal Court and authorize the mayor to execute any related, uh, documents. So, this is the other, um, you know, professional service contract that, uh, I just, uh, uh, mentioned earlier. Um, Mr. JR Garza, who is also present here in the, um, in the audience, uh, is a prosecutor who has been with the, uh, city of Weslaco since twenty fifteen, so. Um, basically, um, I got together with, is Rosa here? Badio?
She just stepped out.
Um, Ms. Rosa Badio, um, so I, I looked, uh, towards Rosa Badio to give me some information on the services provided by Mr. Garza. I know I've used Mr. Garza once, uh, in a case dealing with, uh, court enforcement and, and how we would be addressing the issues and so forth and appreciate the help that you did that day for, for the city, sir. Um, so, just to provide some information, he's been here since twenty fifteen, there was a renewal of the contract in twenty sixteen. After twenty sixteen, basically, it just went, um, you know, uh, it just automatically renewed every year after that. I believe this is the first time, at least to my knowledge, that, that, that we're, uh, looking at the contract and, and, you know, looking at the services and what, what is it exactly that Mr. Garza provides? Um, and so my understanding, uh, we use them for pre-trials, which is the third Thursday of the month, and then the fourth Thursday of the month, you come back for the actual trials. So it all depends whether, you know, how many, uh, pre-trials you handle, um, you know, in the, in the, in that first meeting. Uh, my understanding is usually between four and five, uh, as far as from four PM to five PM. And then on the pre, on the actual trials, um, he's here between, approximately between four and six PM, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Rosa?
More or less, yes, depending on how many cases we have for trial.
So that's just an average, um, he's also the go-to guy regarding, uh, for, you know, any recommendation, not recommendations, but, um, legal. Um, opinions or questions regarding class C misdemeanors and, uh, anything dealing with the municipal court level and so. He answers the calls for Rosa in the municipal court and, and he responds to those calls attentively. Um, there are some concerns, um, I know that, uh, what was addressed to me was, you know, the motions. Um, you know, some of the motions, um, you know, they've been taking approximately maybe, uh, a month to sometimes even two months for us to. Get the motions back from Mr. Garza's office. Uh, one of the concerns that I have as a city manager, I, and I just learned about this. Uh, Ms. Rosa travels to McAllen to Mr. Garza's office at twenty thirty, Olan, I believe, where your office is located at. To, to go and get those motions and, and, and she travels in her personal vehicle and, and, um, and comes back and, and, you know, reports up to the court. Um, there's some, been some instances where, you know, some of those motions, we, we have to, I guess, call the staff back from, for, from Mr. Garza's office. Uh, for example, you know, you could be, you could be a defendant with multiple cases and when we get to the office, we find out that we have one motion when we're supposed to have four because. It's, you know, four separate cases for that specific ticket or docket or whatever it is. Um, but other than that.
Martin, what did, what did Mr. Garza say when you brought those to his attention?
Well, I mean, this is a conversation between Rosa and I, this, the purpose of, of today is to discuss this, this contract. Um, and the services that, that he provides and that's why Mr. Garza's here also. Um, but also, um. So the contract is for five thousand dollars a month and it's a retainer. Um, anything else that I'm missing, Ms. Rosa?
No, sir.
Okay. So, this is just, you know, to discuss the contract and if there's any questions regarding, uh, the contract or the services. Uh, Ms. Rosa's here to answer those questions as well, more in detail and I believe Mr. Garza can do the same.
Well, I heard a lot of good things and then I heard about some concerns that it, like, apparently you've never brought to Mr. Garza's attention and we're, I have his contract on here. I mean, that tells him we're firing him, so that's why I'm asking these questions, I don't.
I will, I mean.
I guess I just don't understand the motivation.
Sure.
If you want to ask Rosa about the item that you talked about, Martin, Mr. Garza, because I don't think that's very accurate at all.
Not at, not at all. So, again, that's a conversation between my staff and I and, and I entrust in what my staff is telling me and I, I need to report that to my commission and that's what I'm doing here tonight. Uh, you know, and to answer Mr. Kerr's question, I mean, the, the contract is approved by the commission and so that's why, you know, that's why we're here today to, to have a discussion regarding that, right? Uh, you, you're not considered, uh, an, um, unemployed, if that was the case, we'd be in executive session, I guess, discussing that, but today. Uh, we're in open session, basically discussing a, a service that you provide to the city. And so, um, that's what we have tonight.
Wouldn't it make more sense to address any concerns with, I've never heard a concern, I mean, with him until today. But wouldn't it make more sense to address those with him before putting him on the agenda to fire? At least logically to me, that's what makes sense, but.
You know, um, I just wanna go ahead and just, um, I mean, you're right, and, uh, but. It's not so much of anything in Mr. Garza, we appreciate your years of service to the city of Weslaco and everything you've done. Um, at this point, this is just me saying, you know, as an incoming mayor is that, you know, it's about opportunities and, you know, I would like to open it up and, and, uh, you know, um. Go out and see what we, what's out there, uh, nothing against you, sir. Uh, and, um, you know, with that being said, I just wanna go ahead and move forward and, you know, and terminating the contract. And, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, if you can come back and give me some names of, or, or, you know, for interim basis and then we can go out for RF, um, what would be RFQs or as later on?
Should the commission decide to terminate at this point, he has thirty days to finish it out.
Thirty days. Yeah.
Uh, under the contract, we have to give him the notice, uh, I would recommend, uh, an interim appointment.
You know, there aren't that many people that do this type of work, there, there are a lot of prosecutors, but, but municipal work, you know, it always helps to have a grounding in, in municipal law when you're doing this type of work. Because some of these class Cs are based on ordinances, not so much criminal laws. So I would suggest, uh, you know, there's a, there's a few lawyers out there, I can give some recommendations, do an interim appointment, see how he does and, and then if you wanna go out for RFQs, you can certainly do that.
All right. So we're talking about firing him? And just confronting him five minutes ago with these ticky-tack concerns that have never been brought up before, we're gonna fire him right now, that's how we're gonna do things?
If I may, without me being able to give him. On to allegations that.
Well, you've never been given any opportunity to do it.
Absolutely completely incorrect, as was stated by the city manager. Absolutely incorrect, there are no motions that I signed as an exemplar. I don't sign motions, I sign dismissals. Those cases have already been taken care of and never have I ever returned anything past a month, sir. I don't know where you're getting, I don't believe that Ms. Rosa will repeat those words to this commission because there are simply not a case.
Well, I mean, I, Ms. Rosa can correct me, sir, and, and today, sir, the, first of all, without your respects, sir, these are not allegations, okay? This is a report that I am responsible to give into the commission who approves your contract. I, I don't approve this contract, so this is, this, these are, these are discussions that, and that I need to bring to, to the commission.
I do know that times change, sir. Know that things are different, I know that people wanna go a different direction, but to be, to, to pick up the flag that Mr. Kerr has so bravely put up for me. To defend me in open record like this, with, which is not true of anything that you've said on the record, is beyond me why you would say that.
Rosa, can you correct me if, I mean, isn't that the conversation that you reported to me, man?
Why don't you ask her on an item, item basis, sir? Because that is.
I.
Mr. Garza, I, I think we're getting a little out of control here. I, as, as the mayor said, I don't think this so, uh, so much, uh, a question of your competency, everybody knows their team of competence, so that's not.
Yeah, it will never do that.
As, as everyone is well aware, professional services are extremely subjective. Uh, you know, in, in looking at the, the TML handbook on professional services, they even state that the majority of commissions. Just don't even go out for RFQs and I don't think it's a question of competency, I think it's just a question of, uh, the subjectiveness of this type of services, mine included. You know, some people just feel comfortable with someone else, somebody new, they feel, you know, maybe there's some complacency. It's, uh, you know, I don't want this to degenerate into, he said, she said, Mr. Garza, you're well respected, I don't think there's any doubt about that.
You're well respected and you're competent, but you're fired, that's. That's what they were telling you.
But, you know, commissions have that, have that, they deal with that subjectiveness, myself included, whoever you feel comfortable with, and that's why the laws are structured the way that they are.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't disrespect anybody in any way, no matter what happens or, or whatever, you know, the way it's put out to me like Commissioner Kerr just said. No, that's not our intentions at all and we're not, we're not here to discredit you in any way, Mr. Garza.
Well, then we could have had the decency to talk to him before putting him on the agenda, I mean, about these so-called shortcuts.
Yeah, well...
Well, and your office has worked with Mr. Garza, right? Throughout the...
Actually, I, I have very, very little to do with that. We've had some interaction where there have been some issues on, on ordinances and we, you know, kind of back and forth, but in terms of prosecution, I, zero.
But for the other issues, have you seen any concerns or...
I, guys, I've known Mr. Garza a long time. He's a, he's a, he's a competent attorney, but I also understand that these types of, of professional services, it's, you know, it's got to be somebody you feel comfortable with and when the majority comes in...
It's preference is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's...
But I'm just trying to get some, I'm just trying to get some information. And my next question is to the chief of police, you guys deal with the prosecutor, right? Or no?
Oh.
No, the chief, the chief of police, yeah.
I don't think so. It's very rare.
Is it, is it, is it on a regular basis or is it kind of rare whether your CID deals with the prosecutor?
I can tell you that I, I personally dealt with Mr. Garza on a, a couple of different things, most recently with regards to criminal trespass notices that the PD is looking at giving to, for businesses, you know, that loiter and stuff. Yes, we, we've had dealings with him.
Any concerns or...
No, sir, none.
So it's been good?
Mr. Garza's been responsive to all of my requests, yes, sir.
I understand it's preference, right? I, I just, I just don't understand and, and my question, Ms. Rosa, is are those isolated incidents or is it, is it, because there's a difference, I guess, on the tiers of different
Yes.
Concerns, right? You have minor concerns and then you have some really serious concerns.
I think with the processing of the documentation that we're requesting is, is the minor thing that can be adjusted. I had already spoken to him regarding either the timing matter that we need to submit documentation because in some cases we have refunds to process. The sooner we get them, the sooner we can process that refund to the defendant that paid the money and is expecting the money.
But no critical, you, you just called it a minor...
No, critical, he's readily available, he's very knowledgeable as far as the law is concerned. We've been working very well and he's always available even in his vacation time. It's just the documentation process part. So we are having a little bit of issues today in submitting those motions, but not his professional, you know, job.
And what has he said when you brought that to his attention?
They were taking care of it at that time. There was one incident where I asked him, hey, you know, we've had this, you know, motions to dismiss pending, can you please process them? And they emailed them at that point. We're getting to that point again that we have motions to dismiss and we just need to process them. I guess it's just the clerical part, not the legal professional.
Mr. Gonzalez, if, he can reapply again if we go out for RFQs, right?
Yes.
How, how long has, how long has he been here?
We've never been...
About 90 years. He came in right, right before I did.
I guess because municipal court is never involved in this process. He's never been involved in this process.
Was that a...
This is the first time that we are asked for our opinion regarding or answering any questions regarding this topic.
And is that, was that when he was appointed or put on by the previous commission? Was that during an RFQ process or was he just appointed?
Like I said, I don't process.
Was he just appointed or was...
I don't have a say in this.
I, I could be mistaken, but if I recall, he was just appointed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garza, did you come in or were there competing RFQs?
I don't believe there were competing RFQs, but I think I, I applied in that manner.
I, I know when I applied in November, soon afterwards, you guys were here till midnight with eight or nine firms. I don't think that occurred in the situation.
So he was just appointed as well?
Huh?
He was just...
And if I may, mayor, I mean, without your respect, Mr. Garza, I, I've always looked up to you. I mean, you know me from my law enforcement career and we've met at the courthouse many times and I truly respect you. Today is, is really just a report to the commission that I have to respond to. I, and like I mentioned, I used you once here and you were very, you know, you brought your information, you were very well prepared. But, I mean, we, we're dealing with, with a professional service that I need to report to the commission and if I offended you in any way and your family and your business, I want to clearly apologize for that and, and I respect your work.
Well, we should show that respect instead of doing this the way we do it. Just put him on an agenda and confront him with grievances in public that apparently have never really been addressed to him. And, and I don't know Mr. Garza, I probably talked to him three times in the last 10 years. So I'm not just taking up for him because I know him and like him. I don't know him, but I don't see a reason to fire him and that's what, what we're doing, so.
Yeah.
But do what you're going to do.
All right. Do I have a motion for this item?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to get statement of qualifications for professional services.
A sec.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve as discussed on item Q. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
What?
I voted against.
So there's, it'd be, I'd vote four, so it'd be a 3-3. So on that, there's no...
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
It, it dies.
It does.
If it's a majority, that's so.
All right. So we go, go on and move on to, we go back...
Thank you, Rosa.
To item E.
Item E, discussion consideration on ordinance 2024-08, amending ordinance 2012-02 to increase members for the animal shelter advisory board and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. First reading of ordinance 2024-08, possible action.
There are currently five board members to our animal shelter advisory board. We are proposing at this time to add two additional citizens, which would make it a seventh board committee with three citizen appointees.
And that's, that's the one that we have, we would have to come back, right?
Yes.
To appoint?
Yes.
Okay.
Why was it shortened to seven? I don't, I'm just curious, I couldn't remember because there was some committees that didn't have the seven appointees to match the...
Um, that's just the way it was committed or created when we...
Was that just because of the way it was before?
So there's one that is involved within the shelter who is Joe because he has our animal shelter license. There is a commissioner that is appointed, which is Commissioner Lopez. There is our veterinarian on record who is Dr. Reese. And then there is a proprietor from the city who is involved in animal welfare, which is Leroy Moreno. And then we have one citizen appointee, which is a normal, I'm sorry. Sandra, thank you.
So what's the reasoning to move up to seven? Just...
I was asked to.
Huh?
I was asked to.
Yeah, we wanted to add two more, Mariah, just to have a bigger...
Are we having problems meeting quorum or is it just... It's probably just to streamline, right? The, the, the number with, to be in line with some of the other committees?
That's correct.
I'm assuming the one...
That's correct.
Motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rias and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item E as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, motion passes. Item F.
Item F, discussion and consideration to award RFB number 2023-24-12 for a new belly dump trailer to the lowest bidder, Brazos Trailers LLC. For a man to exceed $37,000 with $10 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Mr. Garza?
We need to go out for bids for a belly dump trailer. The most advantageous bidder was Brazos Trailers Manufacturing LLC in the amount of $37,010. With the help of purchasing on January 18th, the pre-bid, we had a pre-bid and then we had a bid open on February 1st, 2024. Five vendors submitted bids, which is on the screen. Brazos is the least expensive by around $12,000, which kind of raised an eyebrow, like why was so much, so much of a difference?
Right.
Uh, so I called and verified, uh, it's, they're, they're their dealer, they manufacture and they sell them out, so they don't have a, a middleman. So they sell about 80 to 100 trailers a month. If the trailer is in stock, they'll, it'll be a quick delivery, if not, it'll be within four weeks. Staff does recommend approval. The belly dump looks like this, which is, is it will be pulled by the, the truck, the daycap truck that we recently purchased. So we'll pull this one and also pull the low boy trailer, so. This will help us with either sand or asphalt or any type of aggregate, gallica, that we need to get to some of the sites.
Do we have one right now, David?
No.
We don't have one. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item J as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All against, same sign, motion passes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Did you say J?
What is it?
Oh, F, I'm sorry. I just wrote on top of it, that's why. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to item G?
Item G, discussion consideration on an interlocal agreement between Adago and Cameron County's irrigation district number nine and City of Wescoco for hike and bike trails and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Mr. Reese?
Good evening, Mayor Commission. This item will continue the work that precinct one is starting with a trail from, on the south side of the canal and allow for the city to continue putting a trail on the north, the ditches that are on the north side of Harlem Block Park. This will go before, if approved tonight, this will go before the irrigation district at their next meeting next week. Staff recommends approval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item G.
Mayor, I asked that the minutes reflect, I'm not participating in discussion or voting on this item.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item G, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes. We move on to item H.
Item H, discussion consideration on the lease agreement for the use of Harlem Block Park Sports Complex for the Wescoco Little League Youth Baseball and Softball League program from March 4th, 2024 through July 31st, 2024 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Mayor Commission, this is a, this, the annual agreement that we do with Little League to use the ballpark for them to provide the Little League program. It pretty much is the same. There has been one adjustment regarding tournaments, tournaments that they can have under this contract or strictly the tournaments that they will be using for advancement within the Little League program. So if they do an invitational to raise money, then they'd have to pay the fees for the, for those tournaments. But if it's a, a district tournament or a regional tournament where they're advancing or that Little League appoints in Wescoco to host in Wescoco as an advancement tournament, then we would waive those fees. The other thing, it does remove the limitation on the city's events that we can have at that park. Previously only allowed one event per month while they were out there. This will allow the city the flexibility to do other events at that park.
So with...
Those are the only changes that we have to the contract.
Okay, so on this one, no one is able to use like tournaments, like any outside organization can, can host tournaments during this time period? Right?
If there's, if, if the facility is available, we would be able to do that, yes.
Okay, but to the extent it conflicts with Little League games, we would not...
Unless it conflicts with their schedule, right?
And they're giving you a schedule of all their, their games?
They just wrapped up their registration, they're doing tryouts, I believe, for the new kids and assigning teams. So we'll get a schedule here in the next few weeks. The opening ceremonies is March 23rd. What they did last year with the amount of teams that they had, they had to play Monday through Saturday, so that pretty much eliminates any tournament play during league play. But league play ends at the end of May, then they go into district play and the World Series advancement tournament. So it's limited to practices, to a few All-Star teams. So there would be opportunity to host tournaments during June and July.
What about as far as outside teams? You know, I have a team, I know Commissioner has a team as well that we coach. When it does not conflict with Little League renting out for practices, you know, I know we've rented out for a fee, I don't know what it is, but is that going to be permitted or is that going to be, to the extent it doesn't conflict with...
To the extent it doesn't conflict with their program, which we're looking in June and July is when they're, they're reduced to All-Stars only, so you only have those age divisions, maybe one All-Star team per age division while they're advancing through the...
The tournament.
The World Series qualifications. Fields should be available. In the meantime, we're using Isaac Rodriguez, we're renting all three fields are available for practices.
And that's for football and all that stuff, right?
Ball or baseball, softball.
Whoever rents it, come sign up.
Whoever rents it.
There's always, man, everybody always wants a baseball field, man.
Oh, with lights.
Martin, can we, Omar, can we put a clause in here somewhere where, I don't, maybe next year, or I don't know, we can talk about this one, but...
Yeah.
Where all these leagues submit their, their bid at the beginning of the year because I'm talking about two commissioners right here, the Little League, and I'm all for it for the kids, but then we run into the trouble of where do these kids practice? And they're looking at the schedule and they're here at 8:00 in the morning trying to get a field. How is that fair to the taxpayer, you know, to their teams as well that live here in Wescoco, so am I okay with...
Yeah, it, it's certainly germane to the discussion, it's the contract...
I just feel like we need to start doing something because all these teams, you know, are, are separating and they're coming to Wescoco and, and it's great, but when they're coming in the middle of the year and we don't have a field for them and then we're the ones hearing it, I think we should maybe add a clause or add something to our ordinance that we need to have them submit by January 31st as an example.
You're saying the leagues or the...
All, all the, every single league submits something because, you know, you guys just, you know, you came about, you know, your team came about, there's other teams that are, are growing or wanting to start their own league and then they, and they come to us and, well, we can't have it because the Little League has it or your team or your team and so I, I just gotta, just gotta be something where it's fair to the community as well. That's what I'm asking.
The workshop we had where we invited all the different leagues to come, we're going to basically bring a policy back to y'all to identify how to, how we handle scheduling of the youth programs. These leagues that we bring the leases to probably have the most bang because we're talking 700-plus kids that are in the Little League program.
And well, and with Little League, you're, you're Wescoco, that's, I mean, and that's why Little League has to have a lease because they, you could, they could not operate Little League if they didn't have exclusive use of the fields for their schedule, right? But, but all those kids are...
Oh, then never mind, I was just trying to help you guys, bro. No, no, no.
Well, no, but what I would say is, we do need, we do need like a, a, a better way to determine, you know, when all these teams want to come rent a field, who gets priority? I, I just don't know how we're doing that now, but...
Yeah, that's what was, my, my discussion last time was because of that, exactly what you just said. And, and nowadays it's hard to prioritize because everything's going year-round. You know, I, I got that message in that, that discussion, but when it's baseball season, I think baseball season should be priority. When it's football season, football season should be priority.
But that's year-round, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All these leagues are doing year-round, so we're back to the same situation.
Baseball and football is year-round nowadays.
So it's, it's hard.
So is tennis, so is... Omar, is the issue scheduling or is it, is, is, is it not scheduling and it's, is the issue the, the leagues that come in?
The issue is the amount of teams we have and not enough space.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have the facilities, like...
Different teams are competing for...
We don't have enough to accommodate, so I, I think regardless, even if we come up We don't have enough to accommodate. So I, I think regardless, even if we come up with a plan or there's still gonna be flaws in it. Uh, we're still gonna have those that are gonna-
You know, the fact that, that we're not using Mario or the Pablo Peña Park-
Right now, yeah, it's hurting.
That, that burns us from, for, you know, with all these scheduling issues. And once, once those parks go up and running, I think we're gonna have some relief, but right now we're, we're trying to accommodate that.
You're saying because of the RDF that, that's gonna-
No, because of the lights.
Well, yeah.
The baseball.
Remodeling, you know, the improvements that are being, uh, made. So it's, it's a combination of things that are happening at the park.
Is there a, is there a rule in that policy where we prioritize the city leagues over the travel leagues?
Uh, that's kind of conflicted.
I'm just curious.
No, no, I don't know. It'd be hard because a lot of them are from Wesaco.
We, we, we used to give a, like a discount to Wesaco teams, but then it's like, well, who's a Wesaco team? Like if they have five kids from Wesco, I mean, it, it's, it's pretty impossible to manage. I mean, I think you can, I don't know. I don't know. I don't have an answer, good answer for it.
I just think that we just didn't, like, really look at mile eleven park and see how much lighting we can get in there, backstop.
Yeah, you're right, sir.
I, I think what this, this addresses the grassroots program where you have the most kids, uh, and the biggest need. The grassroots programs are short seasons. So Little League is gonna run March through May. Uh, ten, ten percent of the kids will be left to go into the All-Star teams and advance through June and July. Uh, we've got a handful of teams right now with the travel teams. We've been accommodating right now at Isaac Rodriguez. I think it's more of the booking that we need to look at. We're still old school. You gotta come in to fill it out. We don't have an online setup. So that's something that we'll, we can address during the budget process and bring those policies back to y'all to address that. Soccer's kind of same thing. Their lease is through the end of April. They, they went through their spring registration. They'll be done. Uh, they'll start their program in March. Uh, they'll be done by May and then mile eleven is, is done. So as, as we improve the facilities, the lights, get the lights back on at Pablo Peña, do the improvements at Isaac Rodriguez, we're gonna have more facilities available. Pablo Peña, I talked to the contractor today, will have two fields, no lights, but we'll have two fields available for practices at least daytime and our days are starting to grow longer. So we got more sunlight.
So teams could utilize that on a weekend, on a Saturday to go play games?
Yes.
No?
Those two fields can be, yeah, those fields are open.
There you go, Commissioner.
Thank you.
No lights for you, but you're right.
We're down to two fields there? Mr., Omar, we're, we're down to two fields?
Right, right now, the contractor's still using, uh, the softball field where they've got their storage container and-
Okay.
All right.
Okay, sir.
Make a motion to approve the lease agreement for Wesco Little League.
Sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a commission, and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item H as discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Item I.
Item I, discussion consideration to authorize staff to solicit proposals for a customized lighted drone show for downtown Fourth of July celebration and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the annual Fourth of July, uh, celebration has traditionally been held at city parks. Uh, has, really has become less inclusive due to the limitation of presenting the public, uh, fireworks display. The last two, three years now, we've had a close off city park. We've had larger, uh, larger fireworks that can be seen, but we've closed the park, uh, due to the satellite and the shells. Before that, we had the fireworks festival that the EDC put on. Those are smaller shells. Again, it was still the visibility of seeing those, that, that show, uh, cannot be, uh, seen very far either. So, uh, what we're looking at is authorization to go out for a, uh, public drone show, uh, lighted drone show that would be displayed, uh, in the downtown area. Uh, we need to go out for, uh, RFP on this. These shows typically run about twelve minutes, uh, and it's, they're limited to the battery life of the drones. What we've had, uh, budget for the fireworks is about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, what we would be requesting is, uh, uh, proposals for these companies to provide how many, how many drones they could provide, the customization of those drones, uh, or the, uh, basically the shapes, what they, uh, what they put out there. Uh, and then, uh, what the, uh, the experience of those companies would be.
And also the, the reasoning for this is because of course we want to have a celebration, a Fourth of Ju-, uh, Fourth of July celebration downtown, uh, just the way we do it, you know, for Alfresco and Onion Fest. So, um, I, the, the safest way to do it because of course we cannot, um, have fireworks right here downtown, uh, for, you know, the reasons of, uh, I guess the-
Safety.
Safety. Uh, we're going out and trying to see if, you know, we want to go out there and, and try to see if we can get some drones so that we can provide some type of, uh, show for, um, whoever comes downtown to celebrate Fourth of July here at the city of Wesaco.
Twelve minutes, so?
Better not blink?
Better not, I, I, I'm just curious. How far can you see these things?
Uh, typically about a three mile, uh, radius. Uh, and it's a, it's an up and down, so it's a, the footprint for this is pretty small. We can do it off the roof. Here it's straight up, uh, and, and down. There's nothing that would be around it.
Something was South Padre just did?
Yes.
South Padre did it, uh, Farr did it for their New Year's event as well.
What were their costs, do you know? What were their costs, do you know?
Their cost?
Yeah.
I believe Farr said they, I think they spent about thirty, thirty thousand on it. Uh, the, the range is anywhere from, uh, fifteen to, to forty thousand has been the, is the typical. And there's different, uh, it's just the amount of drones, a hundred drones or three hundred drones or a thousand drones.
Thousand dollars?
All money. Yeah.
Can we explore both options?
Which one?
I want fireworks. I love fireworks.
Commissioner, we can, but, uh, the thing is we can't do it downtown and we're trying to continue things here in downtown. Well, I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item I as discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. Item J.
Item J, discussion consideration to rescind the purchase of a new model twenty twenty five Freightliner XT Pro fifty six forestry truck as approved January sixteenth for sales quote QU one seven two two five from vendor custom truck one source under Southwell contract. Eleven oh four two one dash tier for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and thirty nine and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
J, J and K are related, so we wanna, when we place the order for the twenty five, we found out that delivery would be later, uh, later this year and that they had, uh, twenty twenty four models on the ground ready for delivery. Uh, we would, so, uh, staff has recommended that we rescind, uh, this, uh, this purchase.
Tomo.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Farias to rescind the motion as discussed on item J. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. So we go on to K.
Item K, discussion consideration to purchase a new model twenty twenty four Freightliner XT Pro fifty six forestry truck for sales quote QU one seven two three five from vendor custom truck one source under Southwell contract. Eleven oh four two one tier for an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty six thousand six hundred and sixty seven as budgeted and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
By approving this one, we're gonna save six thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Tomo.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez to approve item K as recommended and discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
We move on to item L.
Item L, discussion consideration to purchase a Bush CDR nine hundred toolkit software, software and cable bundle vehicle collision data retrieval system in the amount of twenty nine thousand two hundred and fifty from sole source crash data group and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Chief. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, this software will essentially allow us to extract all the data from the black box that every vehicle has. And we do have a need for this in that we've used it in homicide investigations and, and things such as accident reconstruction. And so it picks up data like was the seatbelt, was he wearing the seatbelt? Um, was the airbag deployed? What was the speed at the crash? What was, what was, you know, were the, uh, brakes applied? You know, all just the black box data, cookie crumbs with regards to if there's a navigation system. And so we do have a need. This is a substantial purchase. It was budgeted. Um, and how this fits into my plan for the police department is that as a team, we've come, we've come to the conclusion that we need to create accident reconstruction teams. And so, um, with this, working with South Texas College, we have a plan to work with South Texas College to be able to give our police officers, um, some, some classes for advanced mathematics, geometry, um, things like calculus, um, to be able to reconstruct accidents just based off of skid marks, stuff like that. And now we're gonna get them to the next level in which, um, they're actually taking those advanced courses to be able to, it's a basic, intermediate and advanced accident reconstruction. As the larger city, um, from the surrounding cities, we are often called to help scale accidents. So we already have one component to be able to do an analysis, to be able to, through computer aided dispatch, we have a lighter system that can reconstruct the, the accident scene when it's stopped. This allows us to do so much more. And so we're building this accident reconstruction team and this is yet another tool. Um, this is, um, this was a budgeted item, um, and it is not, it is a sole source, not cooperative purchase. Any questions?
You mentioned it's gonna get used for criminal, I'm sorry, uh, accident reconstruction on crashes. Is it also gonna get used for administrative investigations, uh, for situations where employees are involved in a fleet accident?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We can use that.
All right, do I have a motion? Tomo.
Check.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item L as discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes. We move on to item M.
Item M, discussion consideration to purchase taser equipment, thirteen handheld tasers, replacement and recertification equipment from Axon Enterprise Incorporated through contract buy board proposal number six nine eight point two three in the amount of twenty five thousand nine hundred and forty six and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is a, a, this is a substantial purchase made by the police department. Um, we also have some tasers that are end of life and so we need to, um, replace those tasers. Additionally, this is the training ta, the taser cartridges and the actual deployable use cartridges. Um, this has been a, this is a substantial tool for our officers in that it limits the number of workers comp claims because they've had to go hands on. Depending upon the circumstances, you know, sometimes it's safer to do it from a distance with the use of a taser. And so this investment is, is much appreciated by me in that we have less officers, uh, on their downtime having to wrist injuries, ankle injuries, just because they have, they've had to go hands on. And so this taser program has really, uh, provided dividends and that's why we're continuing with the taser program.
City Secretary Mayor, for the record, I'll be abstaining from discussion and consideration on this item.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Check.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rodriguez and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item M as discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes. We move on to item N.
Item N, discussion and consideration on resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty one to establish the Wesaco Blue Ribbon Committee for the purpose of redesigning and or rebranding a new city logo and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Uh, Commissioner, this is the, uh, a Blue Ribbon Committee, basically a temporary committee. So we can, um, bring in seven members to the committee and, and I'm saying seven to give every, uh, member of the commission an opportunity to assign somebody to this temporary committee to discuss, um, you know, or the redesigning and or rebranding of a new logo for the city of Wesaco. Uh, today is just to, you know, establish the, um, the committee and we would bring it back at a later date, uh, give you all an opportunity to-
With the names?
Uh, names, correct.
And this was, uh, an item that was discussed in our works, in our previous workshop, am I right?
That's correct.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Tomo.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item N as discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. We move on to item O.
Item O, discussion consideration on resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty two to establish the Wesaco Blue Ribbon Committee for the Iwo Jima Memorial Monument Recognizing Corporal Harlem Block and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Uh, yes, Mayor, and this one is, uh, like we were reminded, uh, maybe a couple of meetings ago, uh, from one of our residences here in Wesaco that this coming February twenty twenty five, uh, we do have the eightieth anniversary, uh, regarding the, um, Iwo Jima. Uh, and so we're trying to see if we can put a committee together, also a member of seven, so we can have discussions and, and, um, considerations regarding any type of, uh, either a, you know, memorial monument or something that we can be able to continue the recognition of Mr. Harlem Block, uh, at the park or any other location that, uh, the committee might give a recommendation on.
Yeah, no, I know that you and I have visited some of the sites and, uh, um, of course, you know, we want to recognize, um, Harlem Block for, you know, and, and also our veterans, you know, at the same time. And it'd be, it's, it's great to have somewhere where they can go and kind of sit. We had talked about benches, lights, you know, flagpole and different other things that we can, you know, different ideas that we had out there. So I think it'd be a great, um, it's a, it's a great thing to do. And, um, yeah, so we're, you know, I know that you and I, you and I spoke and we wanted to get a committee going and so they can also bounce out, off ideas off each other and see what they would, you know, bring back to, you know, to, um, provide for us or what they decide on this item. So there's a motion out here, entertain it.
Tomo. Check.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item O as discussed. All in favor vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. Item R.
Item R, discussion consideration prescribing meeting days will be held on the first and third Monday or Wednesday during the months of March, April and May twenty twenty four and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, uh, possible action.
On this one, I mean, that, it was just something, again, it's up to you guys as a commission, um, if through the month of March and May, if it's suitable for the commission, if they, if, if we can meet either on a Monday or Wednesday. You don't have to, I'm just throwing it out there. My son is, is, um, you know, plays baseball and I would like to attend his games. And, you know, um, I always say I try to, you know, put family before politics, you know, and, um, it gives me opportunity to go see my son play. Uh, but again, it's up to you guys.
My son plays basketball on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Aw.
I'd, I'd like to point out that actually, you know, the city charter only requires one meeting a month. However, we have an ordinance that was updated in twenty twenty two that sets for the first and third Tuesday. But there is language in there stating that, you know, like you can move the dates around. So you have every, should you wish, wish to do so, you can move the dates.
No, y- y- you know what? Now that Commissioner Kerr has said Mondays and Wednesdays, we're fine on Tuesdays. It's seven thirty, uh, or seven forty, and this was just a, a lengthy meeting that we've been having. Usually, uh, we end a little earlier and I'm all, I'm all good with, our baseball games start at seven and it lasts till like ten, so.
I'll tell you, we, you know, the junior high baseball games were Tuesdays too and I didn't catch them because of these, but, and I would, or I would rush out of here to go see them. Let's just make them faster meetings.
Yeah, I agree. No, we'll go ahead and just, and leave them the same. We don't have to take no action, do we? No, we'll, we'll, let's not take no action on this item and, and, uh, and we'll, and we can leave it like that. You know, I know Commissioner Kerr has his son that's plays Mondays and Wednesday and those games are fast.
They are.
The high school baseball lasts forever, man.
They do.
All right, we'll move on to item T.
Item T, discussion consideration to approve renewal of the loss control, risk management contracts set to- Item T, discussion consideration to approve renewal of the loss control risk management contract set to expire March second, twenty twenty-four. Unauthorized mayor to execute any related documents. Possible action.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Garza. The, um, loss control risk management contract will, will expire March second, twenty twenty-four. These services are provided by Viafranca Consulting Claim Services, a subcontractor through Montalvo Insurance. The, um, current contract is for thirty-six thousand per year and includes two hundred and twenty-five annual hours of loss control and risk management services. The renewal contract includes a proposal of eight thousand five hundred dollars for an additional, uh, for additional training hours. Um, if I may. I'm sorry. If I may bring your attention to the, um, current loss summary report that was provided, which looks like this. Um, just wanted you to take notice that in the, um, last, uh, three years, our losses have decreased. And so I just wanted to bring your attention to that. And, um, also, um, if the losses continue to be at a minimum, uh, we are looking at, uh, earning a dividend check. Uh, of up to possibly fifty-five thousand dollars this year in comparison to last year's, which was at forty-six thousand.
How much was that amount again, ma'am? How much is the amount again?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five thousand?
Possibly fifty-five thousand.
So we're saving money and we're getting money back.
Yes.
Great deal.
Yeah.
Need discussion?
Yes.
Excuse me, City Secretary Mayor, for the record, I'll be abstaining from discussion and consideration on this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a, uh, second by Commissioner Rodriguez to approve item T as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Motion to go into executive session.
A sec.
Motion, let's go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive session. A personnel discussion regarding goals, objectives and evaluation of the city manager of the, for the city of Wasco is authorized by section five five one point zero seven four of Texas Government Code. B Personnel, discussion regarding administrative investigation of a complaint filed by a firefighter is authorized by section five five one point zero seven four of Texas Government Code. C Real Property, consultation with city attorney on the acquisition, sale, exchange, lease or value of real property being thirty-five point two eight acres except the southeast one point ninety acre. For, for a thirty-three point three eight net acres of land out of Farm Track fifty-nine, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Idaho County, Texas authorized by section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas Local Government Code. D Real Property, consultation with city attorney on the acquisition, sale, exchange, lease or value of real property being twenty-five acres out of fifty-three point ninety-seven acres of land out of Farm Tracks eight oh seven and eight oh eight. Block one thirty-nine, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Idaho County, Texas as authorized by section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas Local Government Code. E Real Property, consultation with city attorney on the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property located on the northeast corner of Interstate two and North Airport Drive in, intersection is authorized by section five five one point zero seven two of Texas Local Government Code. F Real Property, consultation with city attorney on the sale, exchange, lease or value of real property located at east mile five north described as a net seven point zero nine acres out of West Track nine point six eight eight acres being an irregular track out of. E four oh seven point nine two, W six six three point two two, N one two one zero point seven three, EXC N two oh nine point four two, E two oh eight. Out of Farm Track eight twenty-eight, Wesco, Idaho County, Texas as authorized by section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas Local Government Code. G Economic Development, consultation with the city attorney regarding financial offer or other incentives for Project Empire is authorized by section five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Local Government Code.
All right, we're back from executive session. It is nine, uh.
Oh, nine.
Oh, eight. And, um.
On item D, Mayor, recommendation to authorize Mayor and the city manager to put the property under contract with VFW condition on reimbursement from TechStunt. And the sellers clarify overvaluation or declare the overvaluation as a donation to the city.
So we'll.
Second.
I'm sorry.
There's no, there's no action.
I think there's a correction on that. Uh, the VFW, uh, property we're looking at is the seven point oh nine acre, which is letter F.
Okay, then that's item F, correction.
Do, do you wanna start again with, with the actual item that we're talking about, the thirty-five acres? On D, on, what is it, C, I'm sorry?
Oh, okay.
Resent your motion, no?
I don't know.
Do I need to resent?
Okay. It's item F. Same recommendation, authorize mayor, city manager to put property, property under contract to VFW condition on reimbursement by TechStunt and the seller clarify overvaluation as donation to the city.
So moved on, corrected motion.
No, that's another one.
Is it still wrong?
Yeah, item F is just, uh, to put the property under contract with, uh, reimbursement.
But that's through, that's the VFW, right?
Yeah, that's the seven point oh nine.
Is that a TechStunt reimbursement?
No.
Okay. On, is that D or F, Andrew?
B is the, the one with the TechStunt.
Okay. So I made that original D with reimbursement from TechStunt, correct?
Right, but that's not for the VFW.
Okay. Correct it as read before, but not to VFW. Sorry about that. I didn't have VFW on here. He's correct.
So which?
Let me just start from scratch, guys. I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I have both conditions. On D, authorize mayor, city manager to put property under contract conditioned on reimbursement from TechStunt and seller designate overvaluation as donation to city.
Andrew, hold on, and I'm sorry again. You're talking of which item you mentioned?
D.
No.
This is D.
No. D, D is, which actually we missed an executive session. Those are the twenty-five acres that, uh, that we were authorized.
Item C.
Right. It's item C. It's a thirty-five acre.
Hey, that's all right. These guys, these guys, these guys could, you know.
Motion to go back in executive session.
Long night.
Okay. Scratch. Item C. Uh, we all agreed it's item C.
Yes, item C.
Okay. Recommendation, authorize mayor and city manager to put the property under contract conditioned on TechStunt reimbursement and overvaluation as donation to city, item C. That's my recommendation.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item C as discussed in the executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Now. On item F, which is VFW, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Yes, sir.
Recommendation to approve contract for donation of property to VFW. Conditioned on receipt of grant.
Correct.
Tomo.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rodriguez and a second by Commissioner Pedrassa to approve what was discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, on item G, economic development, recommendation that the city commission approve the incentive pat, uh, package as set forth in option five as discussed in executive session.
Tomo, second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedrassa and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez to approve item G as discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Motion switcher.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
The time is now.
The time is now nine fifteen.